I want to hear tonight, just now I want to turn the meeting over to Mr. McHale. He's going to bring our prayer leaders to the floor and lead the same part.
Thank you, sir. Let's remember Tommy Manning, his family lost his mother, Ms. Dana Shelders, Joe Taylor here, Scotty Lewis, Danny Claire, Jack Williams, Jude McHale, Courtney Taylor, Amanda Bone, a student at UHS Union Heights has lost a father over the weekend, a sprayer of this family, John Peave, the husband of Ms. Donna Livingston, and then Dr. David McDonald. Do we have any others that you'd like to mention to add to this? If not, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, God. Thank you for the chance to come for our Creator. You love us so much. Thank you that we're able to come to your throne of grace in a time of need. Thank you for the love that you've shown us through the cross, salvation, God. Pray for this meeting tonight, pray for this board, pray for our students, pray for the safety of our students, the faculty, everyone that's involved in getting our students to and from school. And we can't thank you enough for what you've eternally done for us through the cross. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Folks, we've all had a chance to look at your board packages. First thing on the agenda is our consent. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Taylor, I'm second.
Yes, sir.
I'm second, Mr. Lewis. Anybody want to discuss any of these? Anybody got discussions on any of these? If not, I'll have a roll call on Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Ennam.
Yes.
Mr. McHale.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Superintendent's actions. Again, you should have all read these. Any of these you want to discuss? If not, we're going to UBUSIS. UBUSIS is fit approval for emults or vendors. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning. Mr. Taylor. Discussion.
This is using our grant, some of our grant money here for this. Yes.
The grant will pay eighty percent. We have to pay for it, and then they reimburse us eighty percent.
This is the grant we received back then.
Yes, yes. Through the state.
I appreciate you, sir.
How much is that going to leave balance for the school?
Well, if you take twenty percent of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I haven't calculated exactly, that'll be about sixty...
Sixty, roughly sixty.
Sixty-four thousand. What is that? Sixty-five thousand dollars that we will have to pay. And you'll notice that in the amendments when we get to those in a little while. I was moving money around in order to cover the expense. So, you know, we're paying twenty percent. The state will reimburse us TAEP.
Can I add to that? We spent roughly, without looking, I figured it out one time, if we paid for the rebel mulch, rebel mulch would pretty much be a lifetime thing. It would pay for itself in ten years, I think, by say up eight to ten. So, we're getting eighty percent of this covered. It'd actually be a good investment if we just took the money straight out, but we've been able to use the right side of time to get eighty percent of it paid.
Yeah, right. Any other questions? About this money we're spending? This is roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Ennam.
Yes.
Mr. McHale.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
So, yes. Next thing on the agenda is a request to purchase new serving line for CES. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McHale, second.
Second.
Second, okay. Now, I'll open this up for discussion. If we have any questions, I have Ms. Stephanie here tonight. Yeah, she's here back here. If I have any questions, before we vote up.
I went by today and looked at it, and we probably need to. That equipment's old, and Ms. Jennifer Layden-Charge said a lot of times the heating elements didn't work correctly. Of course, you've got all kinds of danger, food, problems there, too. So, I think it's a good idea.
When we got to one point three million, it was free money when we upgraded the kitchen. Stephanie had the insight, had the engineers, it's all upgraded for the new equipment, so it'd be an easy step replacing it, so we can afford to do that. And again, I say, and I think three things we're voting on tonight, grants are covered, a whole lot of them. I think you're getting fifty percent of this sixty, right?
Yes, sir.
So...
It's going to last.
Correct.
It's probably the original stuff in it right now. Thirty or forty.
Your kitchen is where they had the rest of the building now, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Anything else, anyone? If not, roll call again for this money. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Ennam.
Yes.
Mr. McHale.
Yes.
So, yes. Line item amendments to the F-25141 budget. Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Mr. Taylor. Discussions? Any questions?
Is that everything in this, in this? Is that what we're voting on, approving this? Is that what that is?
No.
My laws, this is line item movement. You're bringing money from one section to another section.
Okay.
You're not asking for no money, it's just moving the money around. But she'll have to go to the county court to amend this for whatever people want.
If you approve it tonight, it goes before the county commission next Monday, not like the entire commission. The main reason I did the amendments was to move the money around and purchase the mulch. But as I was looking, there was a few other things that needed to be amended also, so I just took care of some of those while I was going through the process.
Some of the grant money comes in, you'll just replace the first to the other?
Yes, the mulch won't be actually done until June, so the grant money may not come in until July. So, it can be replaced, but it may be in next year's fiscal budget before we receive it. So, I don't...
The money oil, which is...
Yeah, I can't tell you that...
It will be replaced that when it comes in.
It may not...
And it may hit, it could hit before...
It could, but working with the state and knowing they're not going to start until school's out and get finished in June, it may not come in until next year. But we're going to get it, so it all, you know, adds up. But it may not come back to this budget.
You have questions? Not to do a roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Ennam?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
So, yes. Request to approve central technology incorporation incorporated for the E-rate services. Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Mr. Manning? Discussions?
Can you explain real quick what this, in a general, what this pertains to, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McHale, this is for technology purchases. The E-rate program's a federal program, kind of like some of these grants. We get these services at a discounted rate. The difference here is we pay the discounted rate, it's not a reimbursement grant. And so, this is, it's for new wireless access points for six of the schools to improve the Wi-Fi. I'm doing three schools this year, and this is to request to purchase enough for the six remaining schools for next school year.
Okay. If you see out there what it's actually costing, and you know what we're getting funded...
We pay twenty percent.
It's a pretty big deal. We'll get it prepared.
And E-rate pays eighty.
How long these contracts good for, this E-rate? Do you know?
It's a, it's a five-year funding cycle, but what I'm requesting for this is just a one-year, for one year.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Ennam?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
So, yes. Next item is request to approve the state master contract for E-rate purchases. Motion?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Mr. Manning? Discussions?
So, what's the, you same question, Dale Huxton?
So, the first one was the approval to purchase from a specific vendor. This is to approve a contract with that vendor. It's part of the process that the Federal Communications Commission requires. So, you voted to approve that vendor, now this is to approve for us to enter into a contract with that same vendor.
You don't get the E-rate money if you don't provide this contract, is what it boils down to.
Is this, is this company, are they a Tennessee-based company, or do you know?
Yes, they're based out of Knoxville.
I got you.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Ennam?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes. And I'd like to call me, E-rate funding dealing brings in probably over two-hundred thousand dollars a year if we count Internet services and category-two equipment.
Easily.
Easily. So, we're looking at E-rate providing that much money for us each year.
Next item on the agenda will be discussions of the school audit for 23, 24. I think we all have that here, which is in the...
Let, let Mr. Smith or Norma explain this, I know, for the new board members. This is our independent auditor.
Yeah, this is, this is not the state law. That's what I tell people all the time. It would be really hard, you wouldn't be very smart to vote to the school, okay? We hire an independent that we pay for, okay? And then that stuff counting all the state, and the federal, and the local, and the daily. But this is our independent. We've had three of them every several year, and Tamara Beck, she does several schools this. But we will go over these findings, some of them, it's just their size, you can't get, because first of all, you couldn't get some of the findings out. But, but I'll let Norma play that one out. But, but we will go over each one of these with each school, try to correct them. You know, there's nothing major in any of them, they're really good overall, but they will be tried to be their, their best corrected.
We work, we are working on these. We've had some turnover at a couple of the schools with bookkeepers, and anytime you get a new bookkeeper in, they're not going to have as perfect of an audit as someone that's been here for twenty-five years. And Tamara says our new bookkeepers are doing awesome, it's just they need to, you know, work on a couple of things. So, we're working with them to try to get them to where the findings are not repeated any longer.
The Union Heights got a new bookkeeper, right?
Yes. I think we have three that have new bookkeepers.
So, that's on page twenty, Ms. Norma, on this one here, maybe I'm just, you've got Smith County system, school system, is that, each school is, I misread that, I'm sorry, but...
I don't know what page you're on.
Page twenty, two zero, that's just New Milton only?
Yes, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, you're looking at their revenues and expenditures for that school only. So, each school is broken down by what they spent and what they brought in, and that's always given to you guys each and every year.
Is there any time that you, I mean, who is checking to make sure there is a difference from the previous year by, say, I'd say a big amount to me would be a minimum of ten thousand dollars. I mean, is there sometimes differences from, you try to compare them year to year?
Like I said, I think sometimes it's, this is not, we fund the schools and education and all that. This is basically in halves, this is like their own, what they raise, what they want to do, okay?
Correct.
So, it's not a mandate, so to speak.
It's discretion of the principal.
Yeah, and, you know, some of them, we've had principals that didn't want to keep up. We've had principals that's got some pretty healthy fund balance, you know what I mean?
That's what I'm saying.
And there's nothing to say, like, we've got some high schools that have had some massive donations, and I know two, three massive donations probably coming. So, it's going to be skewed compared to New Milton or the defeated that's having to raise every dime they've got, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Well, that just seems like a, that's a lot of money through a little school, and I'm not even questioning it, but I'm like...
You know, we had, you know, a few years ago, we had a, a family that left, was a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars to this particular school you're talking about. That was for playground equipment. I mean, we have some pretty nice donors that come back to some of these schools, and the reason, none of the fund balances are like they are.
Okay.
And some of them do a really good job, you know, with their basketball teams, and with their, you know, you know, like, the feeder runs that league, he brings in a lot of money on the books out there, you know? They don't have to do that, but they go over and beyond. Some don't want to do that, you know what I mean? That's really, you can't. Some of them, and I'm not knocking on them, some of them work a lot harder for their fundraisers and others.
So, that, that balance at the end of twenty-three in, at New Milton was ninety-five thousand in general. We begin that year with it. All I'm getting at is now it's a hundred and ten thousand as the end of June. What would happen if, I mean, that money just keeps carrying over and over and over? Is that what happens directly?
It couldn't go, it's still got to be spent for rampers. They couldn't just go out and spend it.
I know that.
But like, he may be, I don't know, but we could sit down, he, you know, most of these principals have a goal, you know, they want to do a new playground, or they want to do a, you know, something neat at the gym, or they want to do, you know, they, we, they can't provide buildings, we've got to provide them, but they can, over and beyond the, the bottom line, they can go over and beyond.
So, you know, we talked back earlier this school year about fixing that lane change at New Milton to get those cars off the road. And we've got to use the new system now that we're under delegated by the county, they've got their approval, correct? The money if we...
Well, this is a different set of money.
I know, I know that, but I'm making a point here. So, that's a different set of money, but why don't we, if they don't approve to give us that money, the county, we don't use some of this money to do that?
Well, I'm not sure you can.
It's really not the board's money.
It's, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that can only be spent certain ways, you can't. Like, they couldn't save the money and say, hey, I went to the board and they try to get us to build us a room because we're out. We have to provide certain things, and that might fall in that, but it would be something that would get asked, but that, there's no rock is shaking, or they probably couldn't use it for that, I wouldn't think.
Why not?
But, you know...
Well, I mean, who's, who's then besides, who's the regulator, who's deciding who, what can, that can be used?
State or federal, like this auditor, or different auditors to tell us what we could or couldn't do. We would ask that question.
But in theory, that's still, we're over that money, the board is, aren't we?
We're over it, but like he's saying, it's really their...
It's their money.
Like, you couldn't go over and say, oh, gosh, New Milton's got a hundred thousand, and going, we've only got five, we're going to give them PT, then, you couldn't do that. It'd be like me getting in your checking account and getting it to Joe, you know what I mean?
Because that wasn't business money for both.
Yes, now, we do oversee that they spent it, right? You couldn't just go over and say, hey, I'm going to give them whatever, because I like them, and they teach them, you know what I mean?
Yeah, correct.
Now, they could come over and say, Mike could say, I want to build a sign wall coming out where the teacher don't get away with it, or something, you know?
Instead of me like chasing my tail here, and I know everybody's sitting here listening and saying, boy, you're chasing it, I am, because I don't understand who is that? Who says that they can, that is the word, or who is in charge of, let's say we need, let's just say we need something in the school?
Principal. Well, you see it now, Marty. Copy machines when you do approval, like...
They might say they want a little triding...
But they don't, they don't have to ask nobody to spend that money.
They don't, they still have to get approval. They still have to get first...
We're giving approval about that paper trail for this audit, see what I mean?
I got you.
That way, they couldn't just go out and spend it, or spend it their best friend.
Well, I'm getting at this point, and I'm not, I wouldn't take one dime from that. I, I, no, but I'm getting that, what if we don't get the approved money from the county to fix that parking situation over there with cars coming in at entrance? I mean, what are we going to do to get the money to, because that needs to be fixed. We know what everybody's sitting here knows, anybody goes over and picks a kid up, or has to go through by that school on the road in the afternoons or morning, knows that. And I just want people to clarify, because sometimes, you know, we just don't, we assume everybody knows, but, so that money right there could not be used in any shape or form to help in that area.
That would be a question I could ask, but I'm, she's shaking her head, I would say no.
And they have monthly bills they pay. They have to keep so much in their fund to be able to pay their monthly bills.
So, has that money been allotted, I mean, so, that money that's sitting there has been allotted to them to a certain point by us?
It's money that they have raised. Their revenue, their own revenue. So, they, they write their own checks, they do everything within the, that's what this audit is for, is essentially an audit of their checkbook to make sure that all the, you know, everything's in balance. But we, we don't have the ability to tell them how to spend, spend that money, because they've raised it, and like Barry said, some of them have been working on projects for years, you know, to say for new playgrounds, or new, you know, PE equipment, or, you know, whatever it is that they're purchasing. But no, you can't, the school, the school board can't tell each individual school what to do with their fund balance within each school.
I got you. That's it. Yes, sir, I'm satisfied.
I mean, I just look at it here, I ain't going to sell nothing, but we've got one school I'm looking at, like you're, you know, and it didn't show or not have it, they've got, until how many hundred thousand dollars on CDs that people have left them, okay? But, you know, they just put restrictions, and I can leave a million dollars to make that high school and say, I want to go for scholarships. See, the school is the school's money, but they can't spend it because it's got certain restrictions on it.
I can understand that, yeah.
Anything else? Not going, next item is, for discussion is clear backpacks, and Mr. McHale wanted to bring that up, and I thought it was an excellent idea. The only thing that I would suggest, if we decide to do that, at the next board meeting, put that on the agenda, pass it, plenty in advance of any parent, that I wouldn't want to wait till a month before school starts, and pass this.
No.
Because it's not going to, a lot of parents have been going out and bought backpacks, this, that, and the other, well, that would be no good at that time, buy a clear backpack.
Okay, so parents going to have to buy these backpacks?
Well, I, when, when it's, I'd like to intervene if it's right, is it?
Yes.
Two things, I've had parents come to me and say, we think it's a great idea, we don't want to do it in the middle of the year, da-da-da, but Norman and Robbie and I talked, I really feel like if the board wanted to do this, I feel like they'd be a lot of private donations. I don't want to put any companies' names here, I could name one or two, I think, would really jump in there. I think if we just went basic, the school could probably afford it, I mean, you're not talking about, now, there'll be some, but won't like the basic, they'll have to have one that's got a perfect, you know what I mean, loaded up, but, but, but I think we could at least say, here's your clear backpack, if the board wanted to do that, it would meet. And we went back and looked, we thought at one time it was a board policy, but we couldn't find it nowhere.
We, we had clear backpacks back years ago.
I remember.
We did, that was here, and I wondered what had happened to that.
But we couldn't find it anywhere that it was, it was actually a board policy.
I, I don't know if it was a policy, or we just implemented it for a few years after one of them shootings, you know, and then it kind of...
Right, right. But that was my thing, is, if we're going, if we decide we're going to do it, do it the next board meeting, have it put on the agenda and vote on it, we'll discuss, we'll vote on it, but I just don't want to, and if you get, if you're talking about letting them have, I mean, furnishing them clear backpacks, which that's going to eliminate a lot of problem.
If they're going to...
The speech needs to be perfectly clear that they are clear backpacks.
And then that's something else that, I don't know, if that's a safety committee thing, or their board thing, because I already, you know, obviously, there's going to be situations where privacy needs an inner bag, you know, and when they decide, is that going to be a four-to-four, or six, four-to-six, or you kind of defeat the purpose if you get too big. But I think there are situations that need the privacy, you know what I mean?
So, that needs the, the safety committee, which means that needs to be...
Put the restrictions on it.
To put the restrictions on it, and then run it for both, of what we need, how they want it done.
Would somebody in the system go to some company and say, hey, you know, we may need five hundred?
Well, actually...
The price, we want you to...
We feel like that this is something that's going on board agenda next month, and you give me permission, I will start trying to call companies and see if they, or private people, and see if they might donate enough, and see what we can actually buy them for. And so, I could get, and if it's just, if there are no more than I think there'll be, I think we could furnish them, and that wouldn't be a, you know, a three-latch super model, but it would be enough to meet the standards.
Even if we all pay most of the price, and they got them, everybody pay two dollars instead of a few people paying six, give them to be able to distribute them out.
I really feel like there'd be some people who'll step up and want to donate, you know what I mean?
That would be for both sexes, a clear backpack, it don't regard student.
Clear backpack.
Clear backpack.
If you're labeling the students, it's a clear backpack.
Yeah.
The only thing with that, I don't know how you get around that, is what do you do for athletes, it's going to have ball bags, I mean, they may have their check, their check on them or something, I don't know.
You could take those to the locker room before school.
If you're still going to have your ball bags, you know, you ain't going to put your stuff in a clear bag.
So, you're saying sports bags are like that, a pack?
They're all just...
Law bags?
No, 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 we're just saying that...
They don't, they don't pack them around.
They wouldn't bring them around, as they come in the entrance, I guess you'd say, and then the coach could wander, whatever, you know what I mean?
But, I mean, are they, why, I mean, I, I, that's what I'm saying, in other words, they carry them from classroom to classroom?
No, they do some of them, because like the young kids might come in and not have it right, you know, like, it's tougher, he keeps his instrument, so it wouldn't be an issue, but...
Right.
We got some sixth, seventh, eighth graders, that's on the way, they'd be honest, to bring their ball bags in, wasn't it?
Is there not a place that you can...
They'd put them in the locker room, but they'd have to be checked different, there's always things.
Other words?
They wouldn't be for twin classes, no.
Okay, gotcha, that's what I was getting at, right, right, right.
So, say that, what were you talking about, Ms. Shelders?
If you come in with a bag that's got baseballs, bats, glove.
Basket.
I was asking if you packed that around with you, why would you pack that around with you all day? There must be no reason for it, I don't think.
No.
It needs to have a place when it brought into the school, it needs to have a place to be put and leave it there until it comes.
Is that feasible?
I mean, that's what you're, that's what I'm getting at, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you know, we had them at one time, y'all were saying, I don't remember it. And now we don't have them. So why did we have them?
You had a shitty year, you had a first shitty years ago.
And now we don't have them.
Cause my, my children-
We couldn't find it, Joe, it wasn't during my-
Yeah, I know that, I know.
Wasn't saying we couldn't find it, was ever a policy? And I would assume it was during those first-
It was in the early two thousands.
Yeah, and I assume it's when those first bad things happened then.
It was.
We just started, and I don't, but we couldn't find it where the board actually-
It was never made a policy, because, uh-
It was made a policy, then everybody, uh-
When it was done, I know the reason I'm saying this, when it was done, cause I can remember it was done like three, four weeks before school started.
Yeah, and everybody got to say that.
And all, everybody, all his parents got upset and I didn't believe it. They done bought these real fancy nice backpacks and then we say, no, you can't use them, you gotta be clear backpack. I can understand, and that's the reason I wanted to do this now, where everybody has plenty of time to make a-
So are you saying that next year, somebody don't make the memory now?
Did the back-
No, I'm talking about-
Did the backpacks work or did they not work?
The beginning of this next school year had implemented-
Say something, Scotty.
School year, upcoming school year, that's a clear backpack.
My question is, like he was talking about, uh, uh, girls, you know, they gotta bring some of their stuff to school with them. You know, always a lot of them don't worry about it, I mean, hopefully. Well, they gotta have a little something to it, well, you can get a pistol or, or knife or anything that be.
Yeah.
So when you permit them to bring a little bag that's imposed, you're really not, you're, you're fake department.
I'm fake department. Cause most pistols, well, that's the last-
And, and, and they did back years ago, they did pencils and rulers and stuff and had, they wasn't clear, they had colored little bags inside to clear backpacks.
I just, I just wanna play devil's advocate off, off Mr. Engle there, I mean, I understand Brady buying, having a little bag or something like that, and he's clear. Then he also got these sports bags, we have a problem building, they could have AK forty-seven in the football, you know, so we're gonna, we kind of defeat the service, but then-
I think that's what I'm saying to you, that's, that's-
I mean, kids gonna bring-
That's been a call, like I said earlier. Cause I've got, I've got a dollar, how you gonna throw it if you can't?
I'm like, uh, if you're gonna bring a weapon, you're not gonna put it in that clear backpack or in that sports bag. So what we're going through the top?
No, I think, I shouldn't, I think that safety boards gotta come up.
I mean, I was gonna stop at sports bag at the door.
A what?
A sports bag.
Well, there's a, there's a SRO here, but, well, he would see whether or not I had a clear bag and should be looking to see if it's in it.
Okay, and I got you on that, but if you're bringing a sports bag with them, if you're, if you've got to have brain, you carry a weapon in there, you're not gonna put it in the backpack, you're gonna put it in the sports bag. So in, to defeat the purpose, bring both through the door, I mean, that's-
Well, it's gonna strike the locker room.
I, I, I'll just tell you-
That's what I'm saying, you're gonna have to have something that is sports, because they're gonna bring it, you know what I mean?
If you had a clear backpack, listen, if somebody's wanting to bring their gun to school, I can tell you several ways how to get in a clear backpack and you couldn't see it. I ain't gonna tell you, cause you, but anyway, if they're gonna bring that gun, they're gonna bring that gun. Now, I, I, I didn't like the clear backpacks back, we put them in years ago, it lasted what, three or four years? Chris, you was young, you probably carry a boy.
Some of y'all others probably get that, I just know some Chris on that.
So is, is, is the incident with what happened there and with that incident, that Gornersville? So just to shed some light on it, where the general public or no, uh, Mr. Shoulders, you're gonna let the safety committee come up with some guidelines or protocols, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then we will bring it to the board?
We'll vote on it.
And then we'll vote on it?
Yes or no?
And when we're gonna try and do that by the next meeting? That'd be the chairman of the safety.
I don't wanna put it off, I don't wanna put it off, I don't wanna put it off too long. I just want it in time, plenty of time for these parents to make arrangements in case we don't furnish them, they could go out and do-
Well, again, or then again, the board might just vote it down and not do clear backpacks.
True, that's true.
So that's what we're saying, we need to vote it, vote, bring it from the vote, we voted in or voted out. Vote it in and then go in front of the safety committee for them to say foundational vouchers or a three to three or-
So if, if the safety committee, which would be Mr. Lewis is the chairman, Mr. McDonald's on it, I'm on it.
Yes.
So if us three decide we want a metal detector in every school, at, at every doorway entrance, let's just pretend it costs a hundred thousand dollars and this board approves it, the funding is gonna be done. How? Will the new Milton school have to pay all their funds that we're talking about?
That would be something that the board or the grant, I would think would pay. Now, they could probably come back and say, hey, we've only got one, we don't have nine, we got money. But I think we'd have to meet the standard burden, whatever we done for one, doing it all.
But the safety committee would bring, again, bring it before the board and we could vote it down as well as we could pass it. Also, we recommend it, but we can also vote it down.
Understand that.
So.
So us guys, I mean, do we have to officially say tonight when we wanna meet, or I mean, Mr. Lewis, Mr. McDonald's?
That would be, that would be your chairman to discuss with.
Would it have to be an open meet? It wouldn't have to be an open forum, would it?
It's gotta be, it has to be, be written in paper, put on a website, you know?
And set a time and, you know.
Just like a board.
Just like a board meeting. Now, we can go ahead and, am I correct in my wrong, we can go ahead and put on the backpack thing on the agenda for next month to vote it yes or no? And if we voted yes, then we turn it over to the safety committee to critique it.
Did you say critique it?
Critique it.
I got you.
Cause we, if we voted in, y'all, all you can do is critique and then bring it back to us. And then we can vote it yes or no.
Are we gonna have a executive session tonight? We ain't got there yet, but-
I mean, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
Is this, is it, you feel like there's enough interest, you want me to start checking prices and donations?
I would.
I mean, I've, I've been told that, I'm, I'm just being honest, is the clear, are they, do they hold up good? Will they hold up a school year, uh, you?
The ones I've seen are not the quality, obviously, the canvas backpack.
So what, why is the emphasis then maybe sometimes on a mesh type? I, I don't know the difference. What's the difference on, you can see through a mesh?
Yachty's could probably lay a red fence, but you can't see through them like you can a-
You can't.
Clear, you can.
I'm still trying to understand why we're gonna go clear backpacks and let them bring a different gear bag in the house.
A handbag.
They could have a rock and lock or anything, you gotta clear backpacking, one hand, rock and lock. I mean, it seems a bit redundant, maybe.
Again, safety committee gonna critique on it.
I, I'll tell you, I've been down there for a while one time. And we done it about three, four weeks before school started and it wasn't pretty, wasn't Mr. Shoulders. I, I, I respect Mr. Shoulders, if we're gonna do something like that, we're gonna do it, but I'm gonna tell you, I've been down there for a while.
And it's not for this school year, it's for the upcoming school year. That gives everybody plenty of time to really what they need to do.
Think about it.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion on these clear backpacks? If not, we're gonna move on to, uh, I hope you've all had a chance to look at your annual policy review of February. Any questions? If not, you said we do need the executive session, and I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into the executive session.
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
Before you did that, can we revisit super tent actions just for a moment?
Uh.
Can we, or where, you did that, you know, here for questions, but I don't know if you're, yeah. Anybody have a problem with that or?
I didn't hear what you said.
I just wanna put, revisit super tent actions a moment, I just had a question for the-
I, I don't have a problem as long as you don't talk too long.
All right, let's have one, some question, I just got a question, sir.
How many school days we got left?
I mean, we've got, we've got two left, we have, uh, our, uh, our school director for the safety, uh, uh, what am I trying to call her here? She has declared one Friday, one Friday as a, uh, uh, emergency day. So we, then we can recruit one or so, one, just by asking, so we'll have three.
I just, I just-
I had it, I had it wrote down to say that as well. But we do have two, and there's a fourth in Angel's symbol, we might get used to it, so we got three for sure.
Okay. Now, I need a motion to go into the executive session.
I make the motion, go to the executive session.
Okay.
In a second.
All right, all the fitters?
Uh.
Okay, we're back into regular school board session. Uh, I think, uh-
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that this board, uh, follows the advice of our attorney.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. No opposed. Alright. Motion carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Alright, first and second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?